Like, you live in Great Sky? Take five feet to get to the back of Great Sky. It takes eight minutes. As far as fire insurance is concerned, it's not expensive. You're gonna have to argue that with the eyes of the citizens. They don't want to fix that decision. If we can't lock the back of the main door, we can do it. Honest, I can't do it. Somebody work. I got trapped.
As everyone who would like to speak at this first meeting of public input signed up on this, if you have not, okay, if you would come up and make sure you get your name. As everyone who would like to speak at this first meeting of public input signed up on this, if you have not, okay, if you would come up and make sure you get your name. Has everyone who would like to speak at this first meeting of public input signed up on this? If you have not, okay, if you would come up and make sure you get your name. Anyone else who would like to speak who has not signed up on this sheet? This evening is a special call meeting to discuss the veto of the fire department ordinance as passed by the council on July the 19th, vetoed by the mayor on July 26th, 2012. So at this point, I will ask for the public input based on this information here. John Russ?
My name is John Russ. Thank you, Mayor and Council. All I want to know is where is the fire? I mean, really, where is the fire? Seems to be such a rush to do something that the question has to be asked. Fire trucks do not leave the station without a specifically identified destination and adequate resources to contain and put out the fire. You should learn a lesson from the unbroken fire department that you are trying to fix. You and the city council are rushing to put out a fire. You have no location and inadequate water supply to put out the fire. I have seen no one-year plan, no five-year plan, no 10-year plan showing how, when, and the cost for adding fire stations, equipment, and firefighters. More importantly, you have no plans for funding what's necessary to put out the fire. Partial elimination of the senior and permanently disabled exemption voted by referendum in 2001 will not fund this poorly planned fire district's need for even the first year. There is no fire in Canton now. The example frequently used of the recent 28 apartment fire and firefighters answering that call only shows our city-county cooperation works well. The fire was contained and no one was injured. Please come up with a true long-term plan for fire services that will work. The cross association with this plan may require a total elimination of the senior exemption. Please put this to a referendum vote. That's the way to change what was created by a referendum. Seniors understand the needs for great fire and emergency medical services and will vote in favor of a referendum to accomplish those plans. We have made many sacrifices to become seniors and truly understand. Least you forget, there are approximately five permanently disabled Canton citizens currently receiving this exemption. Whatever you do, please do not forgive them. Thank you.
Next person to speak is Peggy Rupert.
I speak slowly, so please bear with me. My name is Peggy Rupert. My husband and I moved to Great Sky in 2008. We worked very hard all our lives and both had pensions. We looked for an affordable lifestyle for seven years after retiring before choosing We were told that Cherokee County and Canton both take care of its seniors. We have no family in Georgia. Our number one reason that we moved here was the senior tax exemption. Our house of craisel in Great Sky earlier this year revealed significant loss in value. No surprise. We are on a fixed income unlike younger citizens and residents who have more mobility to seek employment elsewhere. We do not go on cruises or take lavish vacations. We do not go out for dinner every night, but when we do, it is most often in Canton. Doctors, dentists, hairstylists, grocers, gash, home improvement, computers, cellphone, and other shopping are all done in the city of Canton. We believe in and do support our community and attend city events and festivals. We have never called for an ambulance or fire department in the past, but certainly appreciate all involved in our protection daily. I have an analogy here of what I think the budget issue is. My husband and I have always had a budget, manage a bank account. We have a plan for spending. The city has a budget and bank account. No plan for the senior exemption, except to put your hands in our pockets and take our money. We pay the city's bills. Why don't the senior citizens have a chance to vote yes or no on this important change to our bank account? A vote taken 10 years ago or more does not reflect current attitudes and residents. A few months after moving here, I had four fusions of neck vertebrae at Northside Hospital in Canton. The results are I require physical therapy and injections forever in my neck. There are many disabled people who will be affected negatively with passage of the removal of the senior tax exemption. Obamacare is indeed affecting us negatively by costing more money. One doesn't stop. My final words to the council, please vote with your conscience on this issue. Thank you very much.
Walton Davis, former mayor of the city of Canton.
Mayor, council members, I know how you feel. I've had the opportunity to sit in that position. After returning from a trip out of town last night, my wife and I read in the Tribune this afternoon that tonight the city council will consider overriding Mayor Jingle King Opka's veto of the ordinance ordinance passed in July 19, 2012 to create a fire protection district, provide for the boundaries of said district, and to provide for a tax to be collected within the fire district. We do not believe that you have given sufficient time to receive public input before voting on overriding the mayor's veto. A further concern to us is that skillfully you eliminated the senior tax exemption by saying that no exemption applied. It seems to us that the sole reason for passing this ordinance was to erase the current senior tax exemption. We already have a fire district with definite boundaries. We do not understand why you're against consolidating with the county for fire protection. You hold the public at full national, not pursuing this possibility to have fire and EMT service available to those of us in the city, but consolidating with the county. Here again, the recent fire in this apartment complex indicates that we need each other. So I hope that you'll reconsider this and look at it very hard because you have the seniors that need this exemption. I came in '59, built a house in '62, and have paid taxes ever since '62. Thank you.
John Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for this opportunity. I think Mr. Russ, the first speaker who got up, did a great job in explaining to me exactly what was going on. Recently, we had a meeting in Solay, where I live. Councilman Huffman and Councilman Rush came and spoke to us. And really, what I got out of it is one of the citizens there indicated that the more time he hears what's going on, the more confusion there is. And he's confused about everything I think and everybody is. And what I found was that on a number of occasions, Councilman Huffman and Councilman Rush didn't agree. They're confused. Now, if they're confused, there's got to be a lot between them among six. I would like to see, all of you put your differences away, your personality problems, issues away, sit down and objectively go through it and figure out what the plan is, what's going on, and try to come up collectively with a decision which is immutable to everybody. Compromise if you have, whether it's consolidation or not. I'd also like to see you think out of the box, because I haven't heard any alternatives. One would be, obviously, the consolidation of just going on. You're saying, I think, the mantra, Councilman Verris, he keeps saying that, no, we can't give up the $2 to $3 million. I never hear anything mentioned about the cost. If we put in four stations, we're going to be paying $1.9 approximately million dollars, maybe less, maybe $1.5. But we're getting up that cost, and the city budget would be a lot better off if we were not paying $1.5 million. If the county wants an exemption, which I've heard that people are, some of the councilmen are against it because they don't think it's fair. I don't know. I think you work for the city. If the county commissioners think that this is okay and they can do it, then why not? It's their issue. If they want to grandfather it in and then let it go, that's fine. But that's their issue. It's not our issue. Our issue is if we want to get that grandfathered exemption, then let it go. How about considering a graduated exemption from 10% at age 62 to 100% at age 70? Councilman Huffman indicated a bond, worked working for a bond at the last meeting. I don't know if you're serious about it. I'd be sure you'd like to see that possibility go in. Advertise over 15 to 20 years. Overriding the veto at this point makes it permanent, I think. Consider it carefully and put your differences aside to what it means to the residents and the community. Minimize the impact on residents while achieving your goal. You could do something like that. Lastly, the AJC probably is going to get this, and there's a lot of people, or some of the people that Rube is talking to. Fact of the matter is that that's not going to be good advertising for Canton, nor is it going to be good advertising for the buildings, particularly in Solay. I don't know if they're building outside of Solay or someplace else. But why would somebody want to move in here when they've got a county tax, a city tax, and now a fire district tax? We don't, they don't need it, and that's going to put a damper on sales. I think that Peggy Malloy, I've heard, was concerned about this. I wish she were here tonight. Property taxes will be affected as well as new home buyers' pay, but the taxes are higher, as I said. You may think that this is not an issue, but please consider what you're about to do carefully and the impact of things that will be affected, your decision. I hope and wish that you guys would get together, not allow anybody to speak, sit down, put your personality differences aside, and your differences, and take a look at it objectively, put a board here and go through it and figure out what the cost is. Maybe consolidation is a good way to go. Maybe it's not. I don't know. There are issues here, but again, giving up $2 to $3 million in assets is practically nothing over longer than a time. Your point of admission returns would be realized very rapidly. So I appreciate the opportunity and thank you for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Nice to be in front of you again. I'm not up here angry. I'm up here because I'm frustrated and really disappointed. And why am I disappointed and frustrated? I think the electorate has talked loud and clear that we really look for transparency from our elected officials. The process that has occurred with this fire district ordinance is totally non-transparent. Having said that, I do thank the four individuals from council, three individuals from council and the mayor for speaking to Solay and some from Great Sky to try to explain their positions. But how do you come out with something that has this kind of an impact without sharing it with your constituents? We've had problems in the city before. Many, most of you were not part of it, but we can talk about the restaurant. We can talk about the $2 million that was given by Laurel Canyon developers for a fire department. We can talk about recently what happened with our new water system a year ago. Council, the mayor, management, needs to get the trust of the citizens. Why you having created a plan like many of my peers out here have talked about is beyond comprehension. Those of us in business would never go into our year without having our business plan in place and revised on a consistent basis. Where's your business plan? I've seen numbers from Commissioner Johnson on what the Cherokee cost could be if there was a merger. Why can't we see the numbers? I have no dog in this fight on whether it's the city of Canton or Cherokee County providing fire services. All I want to see is facts. Share it with your constituents. Show it side by side. Let's have town hall meetings. And what I'm asking from each and every one of you today is you cannot make a decision to put an ordinance in effect that doesn't have anything to say what it's going to mean and what it's going to do. Please table the motion. Do your prayer.
One problem in being last, and after listening to these illustrious speakers ahead of me, they've done an outstanding job, and it's certainly redundant in what I had to say, but I just want to leave one thing with you. We moved here four years ago. We had looked at many different locations throughout the series. We're moving up from Florida. We liked all three, and one of the major reasons we came here because of the tax situation. We had a referendum, they told us that those passed, and when I look at the new proposal, it looks nothing like subterfuge, meaning you create a new district in order to get additional monies into the fund at the expense of the senior. Thank you very much.
Okay, that is, that's all that we have. I'm sorry. Do you want to speak?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I almost dusk you.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Yeah, Wayne Rogers, I see it now, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Wayne Rogers. I'm from Solay, Laurel Canyon, and I am here to agree with Mr. Russ, Mr. Fordor, Mr. Bloom, and the other speakers tonight that it's time to table the motion. Where's the plan? It's time to step back. I think a step back now, take a look at the new issues that have been brought to light not only by Cherokee County, but others. It's time to review those and discuss, reopen the idea at least, and at least discuss consolidation again among other plans. Or the fact is that we need a plan. I think a step back now would be a giant leap forward for the city of Canton.
Did I miss anyone else? Okay. Thank you. All right. At this point, we will open discussion by the council. Well, I guess we'll need a motion and then what we entered into discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a quick statement before I make a motion.
Sure.
There has been a one-sided information flow to the constituents of Canton. False information. You're not eliminating, we're not eliminating your tax exemption. If the county would take us over, you would be looking at a 3.4 millage. That's money out of your pocket with no control. What we're looking at is the fire district, and the reason for it is that we'll maintain control here in this city. Why is so many other cities veiling out of counties and jumping into their own indebtedness to run a city? Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to override your veto.
Do you have a motion? In a second. Okay, I have a motion in a second. All right. Other discussion here? No, I would like to make a few comments. I'm sorry. The council, it's very obvious that the council has decided and wants the city to control the fire department and provide those services. I think every member up here has also said that they need to expand and improve those services. And I was the only negative vote on, or the only positive vote to go to the council. The rest were against, or going to the county, the rest were against it, but I can accept that decision. Not only accept it, I can and will support that decision to move the city towards it. But as everybody has said, we need a plan. There has been no plan presented as to how the city is going to do this. And a fire district, in my opinion, is not the right way to do it. We're able to do everything, this council is able to do everything without a fire district with the exception of one thing, and that is raise tax revenue from seniors. That's the only thing we can't do without creating this district. If we want to raise funds to build fire stations, we can do that. If we want to increase the millage rate to cover operating costs of those fire stations, we can do that. We do not need a fire district. That district ordinance is just a way around the senior exemption passed by referendum. Going further, I have talked to a lawyer, and if you talk to one lawyer, you talk to two lawyers, you're going to get two different opinions. But that fire district ordinance is subject to legal challenge. And if we are challenged, we're going to incur expensive legal costs to defend it. We're going to have a possible destruction of handling of property tax bills. There are possible IRS tax incentives. There are possible IRS tax implications for those who itemize, because we're calling a tax a fee. If the IRS, and I don't know, I'm not a tax lawyer or a tax accountant, but if we call it a fee, it may not be deductible as an itemized deduction. It will have an extremely negative impact on our less fortunate seniors. Are we going to be in a position to vote for something that will automatically hit every single senior that we're now going to be taking those seniors that are now pill-splitting to cut down on their prescriptions? The last thing it could drag out for a long period of time and delay the service expansion and improvement. Mr. Bryant has consistently utilized a method of pointing to other cities whenever he wanted to substantiate an argument. I ask anybody at this council table to tell me a name of another municipality in Georgia that has a fire district with an ad valorem tax that is classified as a fee. Just name one. I support the efforts to expand and improve services, but let's do it with a plan. Let's do it without controversy. Let's do it without the possibility of legal challenge. Let's do it according to the citizens' wishes. As Mr. Huffman suggested, placing a ballot on, a bond referendum on the ballot, I concur, that's a great idea. Why not move with that? If the council wants seniors to pay more for services, address the exemption via the referendum, the same way it was approved. If we are to address the exemption, my preference would not be to eliminate it, but if I had to do it, I would prefer to reduce it so that we don't affect these lower-income seniors that are just stretched way beyond belief rather than eliminate them. Before you let this ordinance go into effect, please think, this is not a question of what we want to do. You've decided that we want to keep the fire department in the city. You're going to continue to decide that. It's how we do it. Let's develop a plan, let's find a way to do it, and do it. But let's not just rush off and pass a fire district ordinance that's going to create all sorts of issues. Thank you.
Mr. Court?
Once again, I'm getting earful of false information.
Give us your plan in writing. Give us your plan in writing.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cummings, Mr. Bryant, and myself was appointed by you for fire committee. We had six options that Mr. Cummings brought forward. In those options, one, two, three, four, five, six, the sixth option was a dictatorial comment, we will be taken over by the county. He stuck with it, we disagreed, he brought it forward, and then the plan, the program that we originally were working on was dissolved because of a very stubborn point of view. Again, I want these constituents out here to understand something. I represent the entire citizenry of Canton, which happens to be some young folks too, who are struggling, who cannot walk off and find a job, who has not had a raise in three to four years.
Let's skip this little lottery here if you don't mind, it's individual, make your comments.
So, I, along with my colleagues, are thinking of the entire population. We have to think in terms of that. I understand these citizens here represented tonight, I understand their concerns, believe it or not, I want them, but I have to make a decision. Thank you.
Mr. Huffman.
Mr. Mayor, Council, constituents. You might not have appreciated some of the comments that Mr. Bearford said, but I look each one of you in the eye, and I tell you, he's telling you a lot of truths there. You might not like it, but he's telling you a lot of truths. He said there wasn't a plan. There was work being done, just as Mr. Bearford said, that there was a lot of work that was being done to develop a plan with the six options. Unfortunately, we had a lot of time spent there and a lot of effort, a lot of effort by this man sitting across from him, my honorable colleague, Mr. Cummings, he did a lot of work. But unfortunately, the committee did not come forth with one that was acceptable to the council, and the vote was continually five to one against. Therefore, I don't think it's right to accuse it's not coming up or working on a plan. I do accept the responsibility of not having a plan. And the recent week or so, and the recent week or so, there's been a lot of discussion of working to come up with a compromise. I think we're on the verge of having that. I will say this, and I'll tell each and every one of you if I hadn't already done so, there's a lot of misinformation that you have received, and there's a lot of emotion that affects that information to make the reactions they are. And I understand that. I do understand it. But please, I think we're on the verge of coming up, and you can hear it possibly tonight if we discuss, a solution that will keep your exemptions, but will ask every citizen to participate in building up our fire service. I'd just like the rest of the people on this council, including the mayor, to swear an oath for the City of Canton, not individual groups, and I mean your group. Please understand the difficulty this is. It is very difficult. But we're trying to come up with a plan for our community, and we just want to have fair participation in what fair is, I guess that's in the ass of the beholder. I could talk forever, but I won't. Thank you. I do support, one last thing, I do support a referendum. I would support that, as I told the mayor on Monday. I will also support the fire district. And the reason I can support either one of them, my goal is to have that fire station in place, not for a senior, not for a young people, but for the City of Canton. That's what I was sworn to do.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to invite anyone out here that cares to do so to call me. One of the constituents pointed out about two weeks ago that by some oversight, my phone numbers were not on the website. They are now, my cellphone and my home phone number. If anybody can't do a computer, my home phone number is 479-7281, that's area code 770, and my cellphone 770-827-0048. I have received three calls from senior citizens in the last week, two in favor of seniors paying a portion of the fire protection that they receive, one opposed. I've received maybe half a dozen emails. I have personally responded to every single one with the exception of Mayor Davis, whom I received about an hour before the meeting. Mr. Bearford and Mr. Wood do have, I'm not sure if the plan you referred to that we quote "don't have," if it's a plan of how to, where the fire stations will be located or not. We do have that plan. We have the property. If you're talking about a plan for how they're going to be paid for, we do have a plan. Yeah, yeah. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if you're incapable of maintaining order, we have an option.
Let it stay. Give it state.
Now, I want to ask you the next time we have an outburst, that you immediately stop it. That's disrespectful. I have never been anything but respectful to you. It votes, and I expect the same thing.
I'm going to run this neat, Mr. Bryant, so.
Thank you, sir.
You're going to hit your welcome speech now, but I don't mind me.
I asked you that, Mayor. Respectfully ask you to maintain order. That's my request.
I believe we got order.
Thank you, sir. We will be presenting a plan that does not touch the senior exemption. The current millage rate of 6.8 C Y will be untouched, it will be left alone. That's a separate issue from the fire district. The fire district will be funded. I think that's all I had to say. Please, I invite you also, if you want to talk to me after the meeting, I'll be available as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I would make a few comments myself. I'd like to begin really by saying that my number one goal throughout the past few years has really been to contain the expenses in this city and to reduce the debt. And that's one of the reasons I had a very strong feeling that we needed to consider all alternatives to improving our fire service, not just some. And I think that consolidation was one of those things that we needed to consider. Of course, tonight we're to discuss the veto of this fire district that was passed at our last meeting. While I might go into detail, I do feel I should summarize the reasons for my veto. I think legality is highly questionable, highly questionable. I simply find it difficult to believe we can remove by ordinance something that was put in place by referendum. We definitely have insufficient planning. I mean, you heard of Mr. Bryant say he was going to be presenting a plan, but really, where is it and what is it that, how much will my, will my tax be three years from now? How much will my tax be on my house in four years from now? This is the kind of plan I had asked for, and I believe I asked when I, when Mr. Bearford, and I believe Mr. Goodman were going to work with Mr. Wood, and then subsequently to that, the next day, I actually added Mr. Cummings and formed a committee for them to work. And quite honestly, I don't think that full committee ever had that I know of. I think that the timing of the collection is very uncertain. I think it's inconceivable to me at least that you can put in place a new item like a fire district and collect taxes, make it retroactive back to January 1st, a time at which a tax is actually adhered to the property. If you could put in a new tax district here today and start taxing back, what, from Jan, and send out tax bills, what about all those properties that exchange hands are sold between January and now? There was, when a tax bill sent out now, that bill's going to go to who owned it January 1st, and there's going to be taxes. The person they sold that to, there's no, have not been any benefit of proration of those taxes when it was closed. I mean, it could be a really real mess to do that. I think also that it's just simply bad for our city. It sends the wrong messages, messages to, the message to our seniors and to disabled persons. I think it's bad for business. I think when they see that's the attitude that the City of Canton has, that we don't keep our promises. I think it's bad for business and economic development, and everyone knows we certainly need more of that today. Mr. Huffman and I met early this, early this week and discussed this issue. Mr. Huffman offered a proposal that seems to be somewhat of a compromise. It allows seniors and disabled persons to keep their exemption on the operational cost of the fire service, and yet requires the seniors and disabled to pay their fair share of the capital improvements required for our fire department. This plan would involve keeping the operational cost in the general fund as it is today, where homestead exemptions would apply, and holding a bond referendum to build two new stations. Bonds would be paid off over 15 to 20 years. I don't really want to create more debt for our taxpayers without a referendum. We've had enough of that. We need the taxpayers to make that decision. Homestead exemptions do not apply to bond debt, so every property owner would participate in supporting the building cost for new stations. So, when you maintain your exemption on operating costs, which is by far most of the cost, seniors and everyone would have to pay a small amount, and it would be relatively small on two fire stations financed for 15 to 20 years. It'd be a very small amount compared to what you're going to end up with, I'm afraid. Here's where we are tonight. If this council votes to override the veto, the current fire district ordinance is law. That's it. It's law. If the council has any thoughts of considering Mr. Huffman's proposal or any other variation from the fire district ordinance, then this council should not override the veto. If the veto is overridden, and this council would like to make any changes or take another approach, an amendment to the fire district ordinance would be required and could take up to 60 days to accomplish. And that's assuming there are no further vetoes. Therefore, I would suggest that you let the veto stand, and let us move forward with our fire service in a general concurrence with Mr. Huffman's plan or plans similar to that proposed by Mr. Huffman. It is clear to me that this council at this time does not wish to consider consolidation with the county, even though it may provide the most expedient improvements at the most economical cost to our taxpayers. We don't know really whether it will or not, because the council indicated they didn't want us to really find out, basically by asking Mr. Wood to bring back an agreement from the county, the best he could get, and then bring it before this council for rejection, consideration and possible rejection or approval. We don't really know, but it's an alternative we haven't fully, fully investigated. Even if what the county has been offering were free, it is my opinion that this council has no interest in giving up control of our fire department. So, putting consolidation aside, let's put in place a plan to keep our fire department in the general fund where seniors and disabled persons can continue to get their homestead exemptions and resolve to go for a bond referendum in November for our fire service capital improvement needs. I still believe we can achieve an ISO of three if we pursue this direction. Anyone else? Mr. Huffman.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm not sure about parliamentary procedure here. There's a motion on the floor, and I'm, I think, Mr. Bearford, did you make that motion?
Yes, I did. Is it permissible to request, Mr. Bearford, if you would consider withdrawing that to allow a motion to table this for a next future meeting, would you consider that so?
No, thank you.
You can move the table without the motion being withdrawn. You can table the motion.
You want to postpone it or table it? Tableting would be later in this meeting.
No, I want to postpone it.
Time certain or postpone it definitely.
I want to postpone it for the next meeting to allow us to gather our votes.
Do we have a second to that motion?
We have a motion in seconds here. Then we're going to override with another motion.
Well, we got two of them now.
Just to make sure if I understand, the question to postpone is made in the face of a pending motion, and that's, so it does override it. It takes precedent over the main motion.
And so we vote on the motion table first.
And you can discuss that.
Okay. For discussion purposes, yes, you can.
What's very interesting is, as it was pointed out on Monday, Mr. Huffman came forward with an idea. Today's Thursday. I heard about it yesterday. The fact is, it has merit, maybe, but what we have been working on...
But what we have been working on is what we've been focusing on, without the interruptions of the county continuing to muddle up what's going on here by throwing out erroneous information. I'd love to see them to give exemptions to the seniors here in Canton. How long do you think it will take the seniors in the... paying in the county? Three point four mils, count it up, there goes your tax exemption. You pay for stormwater, so you're paying some other taxes. So it's not all of a sudden, we're looking for something. We want an excellent fire department, which we have, we want to keep. And I'll tell you something, it was referred to what will happen in the next two, three, four years. I'll tell you what will happen in the county. There was no committee. You appointed Mr. Wood, and Mr. Cummings graciously volunteered me as a volunteer to help Mr. Wood. I said, "Excellent, I will do that." And Mr. Goodman raised his hand and said, "I'll be a volunteer." And we did. The next day, not in council, you appointed a committee, not in council. This committee was never a committee. So all of a sudden, we have Mr. Cummings. Well, I met with Mr. Wood, and we did work on a plan. I passed it out to the council members, and it has merit. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. I would say one thing regarding the committee. Our charter says that the mayor may form a council committee and add to or take away members at any time, at any time here.
In council. I would offer my apologies to Mr. Beresford. Sir. I apologize to you, and you too, Mr. Cummings, because I did not communicate my thoughts of our coffee meeting with the mayor. That's my error. I apologize. I hope that would not... Well, I would hope the apology would allow your consideration of what trying to table this in order to get what's required for our committee. Just by... I would like to add the... I have attempted to contact Jerry Cooper of the county, and I've spoken with Harris Johnston, the commissioner, and I've spoken with Buzz Erickson. They don't have a proposal. They don't have a plan. I've asked them to present us a proposal, a plan. They... they're not doing it because they know this grandfathering deal is not going to work. All the folks here, how angry they are, multiply that by 10, because there's 10 times as many people in the county. When they discover that they're going to be paying extra tax dollars to pay for free fire services for people that live in the county, that's not gonna work. Our attorney's opinion is that the grandfathering for the county is illegal. I don't know why we're even continuing to discuss the county. So I apologize for that. I'll stop discussing the county. Mr. Cummings? The plan that I alluded to earlier is one, again, which will not touch the senior exemption. It's now in place. It will not touch it. The Fire District will be funded with a one-mil tax that will be imposed on everybody, no exemptions. The dollar amounts equate on a $200,000 house to $80 a year. What's that? Pennies a day, a quarter a day. Every property owner in Canton would then be paying part of the fire services. The seniors would be paying $80 on the $200,000 house. Now, I know there's some of them that don't want to pay anything. But the deal that they had was a senior exemption, was what it is, and it's not going to be touched with this new plan. It's going to stay precisely the same. The millage rate's not gonna be reduced. And that's... I think it's time that we go ahead and vote on the current motion that is to postpone. So I will call the question.
Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, I've called a question.
Mr. Mayor, he already has his hand up.
Mr. Mayor, the question is...
Hold up a minute.
I call a point order.
Which question? Is it that one or that question?
I call a point order. Point of order is, anytime question is called, everybody must, in the deliberative body, have an opportunity to speak, and that includes the minority in the room. I have not had a chance to express my opinions on this particular motion. Therefore, I say question is out of order at this point in time.
I didn't realize you hadn't spoke, Mr. Cummings. You spoke so long before, so I withdraw that. Go ahead.
The only point I wanted to bring out is that Mr. Bryant is probably correct that they assessed the senior exemption, in other words, that they applied the tax and the consolidation against a certain millage on the tax bills, and they exempted seniors at the county level. What he didn't do is think out of the box. The county could write a contract with the city, where the city contracted a total amount that would be paid for these services on an annual basis with a great amount to be increased, and it would be paid in a total amount, and we would be allowed, as a city, to continue the senior exemptions if we so choose to do so. Or we could, if we chose to do so, also put a term for running.
Okay.
Well, just... I would just like to expand on what Mr. Cummings just said, because it's true what you did say. That's correct. The county will assess the city a charge, but that charge will be equal to 3.394 mils per household. So what that means is that while the seniors won't pay, the city's gonna pay, the seniors won't pay, but the rest of the people in the city are gonna pay more, and I don't think that's fair.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes. I'd like to address a little bit about how we got kinda in this mess, and give you a little bit of an alternative, a little bit of information. I've been on this council four and a half years, and believe me, we've done a good job of keeping services with what we have, but we haven't had the money to do this. For instance, from 2009 through 2011, we've had a millage rate of 6.8 percent. No increase. You all have not had an increase at all. I doubt there's many cities that can say they haven't had any increase during that time. Because this, our service programs have suffered, this amounts 18 percent that we've lost in the last three years. That's approximately 150... 1,1,500,000 dollars in revenue. If we just remained revenue neutral. We haven't remained revenue neutral. Those taxes have not increased. We like our seniors. We love our seniors. But we do for everybody. Everybody should pay an equal sum. Seniors deserve a break because they've been here a long time, and they've paid their share, and they shouldn't pay higher taxes. Also, our taxes on property have declined in the last three years. All of you have gotten property tax bills. Have any of you had one that's gone up?
Yeah!
So I apologize. I haven't heard from you. A house guy had a $180,000 in 2009, is now $153,000 in 2011. A house in Governor's Lock that's $285,000 in 2009 is now $225,000. So you can see this decrease in revenue and us not increasing the millage rate has caused all this. That's what's caused all these services to go be neglected. And we've done a great job. The mayor has done a great job of leading us. We've decreased this debt from $62 million, I think it was when I came on and he came on, to $48 million. That makes it sound like a tremendous amount, and it is, but it's not as bad as $62 million. And we have kept this city running, and we have not had to borrow more money. And that's what we don't want to do. We do not want to borrow more money. Why pay somebody else more interest when there's a simpler way to do it? A $200,000 home with a one-mil amount would be about 23 cents a day, as Mr. Bryant said. If that would... You know? And I think that's something that everybody can pay for. That's less than a quarter a day. I think that's a fair thing. But when am I gonna do away with the senior exemption? Believe me, I would never vote today.
Let me make... You don't mind holding down back there a little bit? You don't mind? Let me address the tax increase situation over the last few years. We have tried to maintain a fairly low interest rate and keep taxes down as much as possible, and still meet our debt requirements and meet the basics of the city. But you know, I hear a lot of times that we didn't maintain revenue neutral, and we lost two and a half million dollars, whatever, by not doing that. Well, over the last three years, we had almost $2 million, right at $2 million in excess revenues over our expenditures. Now, that tells me that, you know, we were very conservative with the budgets and managed very well. It's always better to leave money, have more money left over, obviously, than you have bills to pay. But that money, I mean, I didn't see anybody clamoring to take that money and put it in the fire department, which it could have. That would've been... If we'd have taken that money each year, stuck it away and not used it, it would've had cost us $2 million right there. But they weren't doing that at that time. So I just wanted to make sure that it's a little more than just the not maintaining revenue neutral than you might think on the surface anyway. Okay, anyone else? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to rebuttal that comment.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. We had saved the $2 million. And also, what we did, we carried over every year because we didn't get projects done from previous year, and we had to fix this roof. We had to repair numerous other things. We've had to continue to pay additional costs at the reservoir. We've had to pay just outstanding debts that continue to come up. We had to replace police cars. We had to carry that forward so that we could maintain services. So, yeah, I think we have done a good job. We have really tried to stay with the program. Mr. Wood has cut back on staff personnel, and we've cut back through buying items on the budget. Time to pay the piper.
Okay, anyone else? I want to say one more comment here before we do that. I did, and this is very unofficial, I did speak to the Attorney General for the state of Georgia today, personally. And I could tell you, he has concerns about basically what I told him and asked him about. Did he get anything? Nothing official, nothing in writing, and what I called about was asking whether, how, what the procedure would be, basically, to ask for an opinion on some of these items, whether or not you can essentially remove homestead exemption by creating a reasonably arbitrary Fire District. That was a question, because that has been... It may not be this instant, but it has been a major concern and part of the program. I also asked whether or not you can... One of the concerns I had was whether or not you could levy a tax or set up a district in August and collect taxes on it by sending out tax bills that year and make it retroactive to January 1st. Before I could finish that statement, he said, "Oh, you'd have to start that in the following year." Now, nothing formal, and that was top of his head in just a conversation. I want you to understand that. But it's enough to tell me that there's a lot of uncertainty there, and that should, I would like to ask this council in a general concurrence, that if indeed we implement a Fire District... a Fire District ordinance, that we do ask our city attorney to ask the Attorney General about the legality of these items. That's all I would ask.
Mr. Erickson?
Yes, sir.
That's a very interesting point. We're sitting here a little later in the evening, I guess, and discuss the budget, and we're gonna discuss that we might need to have a millage increase, which will be called for come January 2013. I guess we can't do that till 2014, as what the Attorney General has said.
No, I think this is...
No, I understand. We increase millage in October for the September budget. It's effective if the end of the year, revenue comes in. 2012 revenue will come in with that in there.
Thank you. The tax bills, I will say that tax bills that you get in November are 2012 tax bills, not 2013. So... And they are for the whole year of 2012, not for any part of 2013, because property tax attached to the property is January 1st of that particular year. Okay. All right, we have a motion.
A motion.
Postpone. And we have a second. All right? Okay, we'll have a roll call. All right? Mr. Huffman? Yes. Okay. Mr. Cummings? Mr. Goodman? Mr. Bryant?
No.
No? Okay. Mr. Beresford?
No.
Mr. Rush?
No.
Okay, I guess that's everyone in it. Okay, the motion carries. Uh, whether the next motion, oh, this motion to override the veto?
Roll call, please.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bryant?
Yes, override.
Mr. Beresford?
Yes.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
No.
The motion carries. So we now have a Fire District ordinance, and so it will be...
Point of order. My motion is to direct the city attorney to prepare an amendment to the Fire District ordinance, striking the last sentence, Plan 49-2.
Yes, sir. I believe that would be out of order, actually, since that did not have...
The sentence says, "No funds from the general fund shall be used to define the cost of providing fire protection within the district."
Point of order. Point of order that this was a vague to address only the passing of this ordinance, amendments, or any changes to this one that should be brought up at future meetings. It is not an agenda item.
I think... I believe you're absolutely correct that this... it would need to actually go in, go for a work session or discussion, and we need to know what we're really talking about, and otherwise, as we can, I don't think we can just grant the other...
Appeal the point of order. Appeal.
Full council vote on the...
Okay. All right, we have an appeal. So the point of order, is the mayor can rule? I believe... Is it... Well, there is an appeal, and we're wondering if you think we're bad at it. I believe it says that the mayor may rule on that, or... Or? No?
No, an appeal, it says, "If a council member disagrees with a decision made by the chair..."
Okay.
"...that council member will appeal. If the appeal is seconded, the appeal will be considered by the council members. But I have to receive a second."
No, you have a second. Second? Okay.
Then it goes on to say, "The chair has the opportunity to explain the ruling that's been charged, and then the council members can debate the appeal, and then there's a majority vote."
Okay. Please explain, sir. Susan, would you like to repeat that?
No, you're on.
The mayor ruled that that was a correct point of order and therefore that the motion was improper. That's, and so the appeal is now of your ruling, I guess.
Okay.
Well, the called meeting rules, I mean, the charter version says you can address only the items listed for business at a called meeting. Now, whether it is detangential or not, you know, do whatever. The general, I have the other items, so I don't know what the items were.
We had, by taking a vote, completed that agenda item, and as we all know, the vote was five to one to action taken to override the veto.
I've been informed by the attorney that that's not even necessary. I'll just tell everybody why. Tomorrow, I will direct the attorney to prepare this change in the ordinance that I am, and we will vote on it at the next meeting, because this motion I made is not to decide anything, it's just to direct the city attorney to change the ordinance. And the reason I'm asking him to do this is because at the meeting before last, we were given copies of the ordinance written by the city attorney and Mr. Beresford. We all had it, took it home and stated it. A couple of days before the meeting, the mayor called the city attorney and directed him to add a sentence changing the ordinance that we had often given. So now the ordinance is a different statement than what we were given to start with, and I realize, you know, you can make an argument, well, we weren't informed, but, you know, there is a matter of trust, and I just think that's very deceptive and underhanded, and, you know, I didn't want to bring this up. I wanted to just quietly do it, Gene, and not have to mention that, but it is a fact that you, without any of our knowledge, except probably Mr. Cummings, I don't know, I hadn't talked to him, but the others, nobody had any knowledge of that. You slipped it in on us, so we need to correct it.
Mr. America, if I may, read the agenda for the prior meeting. Under old business, 7D, discussion and approval of ordinance to create a fire protection district, to provide for the boundaries of the fire protection district, and to provide for a tax to be collected within the fire district, attachment for, in parentheses, revised to add last sentence to section 49-2. All you had to do was read the agenda to know that it had been revised.
And that was, that was a week before, this week, the agenda was prepared was a week before the...
That is correct.
I just, I just find it interesting that you two are all about letting everybody know everything, except when it's a deal you're trying to slip through, that is secret between the two of you. Again, I didn't say you did anything illegal. I'm talking about just violation of trust. If you're going to change an ordinance that one council member here created, at least have the decency to let him know. Mr. Beresford was not even informed of that. That's just underhanded. You knew about it because you already did it.
That's enough of this. We've got enough.
Mr. Barrett?
Motion?
I believe he withdrew your motion, just about.
My understanding is we don't need to vote, we'll just, right. In fact, I'm directing you now, so it's okay.
No draw.
You have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, round second.
Second.
All right, those in favor, six to five, say aye.
Aye. Mayor, five-minute break, please.
Five-minute break before the next meeting.